Read the roll, please.
Mr. Welker?
Here.
Mr. Hart? Ms. Cole? Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda and discussion of questions. Clearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have two requests today, and I think we probably can take them both at the same time with...
Mr. Chairman. Item one is a request from Waste Management Services Superintendent to initiate the civil service process and fill a position of C-MON, technician at the Waste Management Services Department. And item number two... Do you want to do both at the same time, or...
Yes, if you would.
Okay.
It's up to you, but they're both pretty simple.
Item number two is a request from Traffic Operations Superintendent to initiate the civil service process to create an animal control officer list and fill a vacancy.
Is that the vacancy, or...
I'm pretty sure that's vacancy.
You think it's vacancy?
I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay.
Somebody didn't read the stack check.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on these two requests. Is there any discussion or questions on either one of these?
No good questions. Larry, on the C-MON, is this the second C-MON position? Is that correct?
Larry Smith, Superintendent Waste Management Services. It is the second position under C-MON. We have the C-MON specialist, and this is a technician. Will work under the C-MON specialist, primarily working on the condition assessment program.
So this has all to do with meeting the EPA requirements, correct?
That's what we're trying to do, yes, sir.
Grow local government. Wonderful. All right. Thank you.
Is that... That's not Mark's position, is it?
No, Mark is the C-MON specialist. This is a technician-
Okay, okay.
...that will work under him.
Got you.
Any other questions?
Number two... And is this... Is this the first of... I've kind of lost track of how many different positions we had approved for that, but...
Okay, this is the first... This is a full-time officer.
Okay.
And we already have a couple part-times, so this hopefully will be it. This should staff us so we can... We're out on the street more now because we don't have to take care of the animals anymore. And we're... We fall behind, or we fell behind before on following up on the span, neuter, and the licensing. This will allow us to do this in Waterloo and Cedar Falls.
So is this the second full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
We already have one, Brian has been on.
Yeah, okay. I guess I had in mind we were going to have about a half dozen part-times and just the one full-time, so I guess I must have been mistaken.
Yeah, this was approved in the budget.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Any other questions from anyone? If not, I have a quick... Roll call, please.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, the chairman, all in favor say aye.
Guys, try to make some of those. They have a great time. Latanya, thank you for this and all that you do. We much appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor Austin. Latanya is retiring this year. Latanya, how many years have you been at Hawkeye Community College?
Twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Twenty-five-ish, twenty-five plus?
Started when she was nineteen.
There you go.
Forgot to add that.
Alright.
Alright, thank you ladies, and you know the drill. You're welcome to stay for as long as you want, but if you choose not to, you're not going to offend anybody if you don't want to stay for the rest of the proceedings. So, there you go with that caveat. Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move that we receive, place on file and approve the consent agenda items one A through B five. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance vice chair. Our bills this week are three million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents. That's three comma eight-three-three comma six-seven-eight point four-five.
Second. Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of questions about some of the liquor licenses. I don't think they necessarily warrant, you know, making them an individual item. If I could just get a little clarification and leave them on the consent agendas, is that alright?
Sure.
Okay. The first two, the one-day transfers. Could I just give a little overview about what those are? The River Loop Expo and the Five Solomon Brothers?
Well, let me see where we are. Oh, okay. Kelly, can you speak to those, or maybe Joe, can you? It's kind of a quick question, and Suzie would have an answer in a heartbeat, Mr. Schmidt. I'm not sure if anybody, does anybody else? One day, yeah, go ahead. If you can talk about them, that would be great.
Aren't you glad you came?
Just give us your name and address.
Nick Hedrick, 200 West Fourth Street, Command Center Manager. This is just a one-day transfer for our liquor license at the Command Center to go to the Expo Grounds for the VGM Gala, and then I'll transfer back the next day.
Okay. Does that answer that, Mr. Schmidt?
So, that's the Five Solomon Brothers?
Correct. And then the Center for the Arts holds the liquor license at that property now, so they would have to transfer theirs off, so ours can transfer later.
Oh, okay. Alright. Yep, that answers that.
Okay, thank you.
And then I just had also a quick question about the two renewals on Broadway Street. And I assume that those haven't, those aren't two of our problem facilities over there, but I'd just like confirmation of that, I guess.
Well, tell me which ones they are, Mr. Schmidt.
Two D, two D and two F.
Right.
Quick Stop Four and Broadway Liquor. Five fifteen Broadway and eight twenty-one Broadway.
Please.
Joel Iwood, Waterloo Police Department. I anticipated this question, so I pulled calls for service for the past year. Taking out traffic stops and alarms, the eight-hundred Broadway, twenty-one Broadway had thirty-three calls for service in a year, and the other one had eleven. So, no, they're not real high.
What's a, what's a high number, just out of curiosity?
Well, I pulled a couple random, like the Quick Star in that neighborhood has a hundred and twenty-five, and I wouldn't consider that high either. Over the course of a year, that's, you know, ten, twelve a month. It's not outrageous. And I didn't take traffic stops or anything out of the Quick Star, there's just too many of them to count.
Got you. What about, what about violations for like liquor, liquor or cigarette violations? Either one of those had any?
Not that I, that I saw immediately. I think there might have been one public intoxication that came onto the property, but wasn't a result of the property, because they don't obviously sell for consumption on premises.
Further?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Anything else on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
I just wanted before vote, I'm gonna vote no on both those Broadway ones, basically because of the neighborhood there, and the people in the neighborhood are wanting the proliferation of liquor stores to leave their neighborhoods, so that's my vote.
Okay, and I have much more empathy for your vote, Mr. Morrissey, if these were new licenses. These are not new, these are renewals that have been there for quite some time.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
Further questions on consent agenda? And clerk gets a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, on everything but the B two, D and F, and then I have to stay on AM as well.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
B two D and B two F, no. Yes to everything else.
Very good. Motion's carry. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion to receive and file approval of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's a request by David Welch for a site plan amendment to amend the conditions of zoning in a C one CZ conditional zoning district located at ten thirty-three Decathlon Drive.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are you aware of any written comments on file regarding this item?
Uh, no written comments on file.
Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak either for or against a site plan amendment for Mr. Welch on Decathlon Drive? A second time. I'm sorry.
John Sherbin, seventeen fifteen Robin Road. I don't have any cards in this game with this gentleman, but I, he's always running an extremely clean business. I don't believe he's ever had any trouble down that area. He's the place good and, and does a good job there. Also, we wouldn't have to kick in any TIF money or possibly any city money to get him in business, so. And the way that's, his building is sitting on that property, it wouldn't be a problem as far as visibility. I'm sure that he runs a very clean ship, and because everything's always tucked away very neatly, so that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the project?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing and file the oral comments, and also a recommendation of approval of planning, programming and zoning commission. Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
Uh, Noel. Didn't staff recommend denial of this?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. No, we did recommend approval with the four conditions listed on the council communication, which, which we believe helps lay out the site for the automobile sales and for the automobile repair, so that it's away from the residential and more the, more towards the more commercial end of it at the southeast corner of the site. So, we did recommend approval with those conditions in place.
Had there not been a, a previous agreement that the person that owns this had signed saying that they would not put an auto repair shop at this site?
That is correct, and those are, there was four conditions that were listed on the council communication that were the previous four. At that point, those conditions were agreed to. The new applicant is asking for the change in the conditions because of the requirements of the Iowa Department of Transportation. To run an automobile sales place, they have to have a repair portion dedicated to the site. So, we worked with them to find what we believe to be an appropriate location on there. There's a small garage in the southeast corner to be able to be used for a repair part that'll fit in with the neighborhood.
And when this was, this condition was written up a few years back, was part of the concern coming from the neighbors? From the residents in that area?
I believe we had some concerns from some neighbors to the far north, which is why we wanted to limit the, the repair portions to the southeast.
And where are they with this now?
We did not have any opposition at the latest request.
Were they informed though?
They were mailed notification, yes.
Okay.
Noel, can you tell us how long, how long ago they were mailed that notification?
I'm trying to see, it went to the, it was on the May fifth Planning and Zoning Commission, so it would have been mailed at ten days prior to that.
Wow, alright, thank you.
Further? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment for ten thirty-three Decathlon Drive.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones?
Is there any time sensitivity, sensitivity to this item?
No. Mr. Welch is in the audience. I guess I would ask him about the time-sensitive nature of it.
David Welch, eight-six-seven Lynn Keeley, Waterloo. Uh, no, there is no immediate need right now. We basically have to do this to meet the requirements for the DOT. It was an oversight back in 2011 when this was put through by another individual.
Okay.
So, we're just basically trying to get these things fixed so we can send in our application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Welch, appreciate it. Does anybody have questions of Mr. Welch, as long as he's at the microphone? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, I lost my voice.
We've got a motion.
There is a motion and a second. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, suspend the rules. Second.
Madam Clerk, please, that's a roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good.
Mr. Schmidt.
Oh, Mr. Schmidt, I apologize.
No.
The motion fails. We'll read again next week for the second time. Let's do resolutions three at a time, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart, sorry, to you.
Move to adopt a resolution approving submission of grant application to the HUD Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes for a three-year grant in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars, and match of three hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars from CDBG funds. And four, I move to adopt a resolution to concur with the determination of Community Planning and Development Director that the proposed change to the approved site plan to demolish an existing building within S one Shopping Center District, and to allow for the construction of a new four thousand eight hundred and seventy-six square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant located at one-three-three-one Fleming Drive is minor and shall be approved as a minor site plan amendment. Five, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the exception to the City of Waterloo purchasing procedures to approve piggyback from the Minnesota State bid for the purchase of one two thousand and fifteen Elgin Pelican street sweeper in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and three dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have questions or comments on three, four or five?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I had a quick question on number three. I'm just wondering, what's the, do we have an estimate of when that lead paint issue will no longer be a issue? Hasn't lead paint been banned since the seventies?
Uh, it has, but there are still a lot of housing units, commercial units that have paint, and therefore we find the necessity, necessity to apply for funds to continue to abate.
Okay, I mean, do we have an estimate, Rudy, on how, how long that'll take before that's history? I mean, just from a percentage standpoint?
No. No, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Further questions on any of those three? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Six, seven and eight, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Welper.
Number six is a resolution approving the involvement of the Waterloo Police Department as a participant in the Iowa Child Adoption Response Team. Cart.
Program. Number seven is a resolution approving the state recreational trails funds application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a lawful match not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars for the Highway sixty-three recreation trail extension, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number eight is a resolution approving contract bonds and certificates of insurance with Mike Doe and Concrete and Masonry Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-five cents for the fiscal year twenty sixteen Cunningham School Safe Roads to School Contract Number eight-five-one.
Second.
Counsel, any questions or comments on six, seven or eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lynn.
Jeff's not here. Eric, is, that's not, we're not talking about the overpass on this application. We're just talking about at-grade trail, aren't we?
Eric Thorsteiger, you're correct. We're talking about the portion of trail from where it ends now at Parker Street, and then it would run down to the overpass.
Okay, are we still in discussion about the trail on the bridge?
I, I don't want to say it's a foregone conclusion, but I think everybody supports that. It's a matter of finding funding for, you know, for everything that's necessary for that project, so we're continuing to work on that. This is one of those efforts to find more funding for the Highway sixty-three project for the costs that the city would have to pay for.
Thank you.
Further? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, those motions carry. Let's, yeah, let's do the last three, please. Nine, ten and eleven.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting the bid from Altorfer Incorporated of Sierra Rapids, Iowa in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirteen cents for the rice neshia improvements to the emergency power generator at Waterloo Regional Airport. Number ten, a resolution accepting the bid from Fowler Hurley Construction Company of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars, fifty-four cents for the removal and replacement of windows and the performed tuck pointing on the exterior masonry of the General Aviation Terminal Building at the Waterloo Regional Airport. And number eleven, a resolution approving memorandum of agreement with the Waterloo Community School District to extend technology leadership, network services and supplemental technology support services to the city and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those, nine, ten and eleven? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time, an ordinance amending number five zero seven nine as amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official, official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four approving a rezone of certain property for a request by Nicole Cook to rezone four point four-three acres from A one agricultural district to R two one and two family residence district for the purpose of constructing one new single-family home generally located east of nine-twenty Southview Drive.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Time sensitivity on this?
I don't know, they can't build until it gets passed.
I understand that.
It's a, it's, it's, she wants to build a new house in Waterloo.
I understand that.
I thought that's what we want.
Are you aware of any issues with this? Is there any objections or anything going on with this? There's, there's nothing that anybody knows of, Mr. Jones. As far as time sensitivity, we're not aware of any, but...
Mr. Mayor, I think that possibly the consideration is there's a reason for three readings, and the reason, I think one of the reasons for three readings is to make sure that everybody does get an opportunity here about this, and if a neighbor happens to be gone on vacation or go on an extended trip, I mean, I think that's part of the purpose of the three readings.
Is there further comment? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper as well.
Oh, Mr. Welper, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's your answer?
I said yes.
He likes to see construction. He likes to see houses built in Waterloo, too.
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hart?
Move to receive, file...
I don't think the motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we can't suspend the rules.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time, an ordinance approving a request by Seth Green to vacate a platted five-foot wide by approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-foot-wide long utility easement on the west property line of lot three of Tower Park Number Five for an ordinance approving... I already read that.
Okay, I, I want to go back one to item number twelve. I, I think, Mr. Schmidt, that we can and we should read a motion to suspend. We, if we were to get a unanimous vote, that would pass. Am I not correct? Is that the issue that you raised, that we can't have a motion suspend on twelve?
No, I thought the motion was to suspend the rules.
You've got to have six, yeah.
And you only got a five.
Super majority.
So, I think that motion was...
I missed one.
Sure, no, it's fine.
You're right. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor for thirteen, for reading for the pass the second time. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. And Mr. Jones, hopefully you were going to ask the question, there is some urgency to this. Mr. Green would like to get started with this.
Mr. Mayor, move to suspend the rules.
Second. Alright, it's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion fails. We'll read it again next week.
Oh, me too, yes.
I mean, Mr. Jones has to go too.
Yes, I didn't vote, yes.
Okay, I thought you did vote. I thought you voted yes.
Did I?
No.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, this, this still fails, so we'll take this up for a third ruling next week.
I'm not...
You didn't get to vote?
What?
Did you get to vote, Eddie?
I did.
Okay.
Finally.
Mr. Schmidt?
Number fourteen, I'll take number fourteen. Number fourteen is a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the third time, and adopt an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance number five zero seven nine to update multiple sections on file in city clerk's office, including changes for hard-service driveway, parking requirements, minimum garage requirements, freestanding commercial parking lots, driveway and parking requirements for multifamily dwellings and other miscellaneous updates.
Second. Alright, there is a motion and a second. I'm going to ask Mr. Schrader to come to the microphone, please. I, I think, Eric, what I'd like you to do is, is more than explain what this is, I would like you to please explain what it is.
Okay, Eric Schrader, city planner. So, yeah, there's been some confusion and misunderstandings since we had multiple ordinance amendments going through at the same time. So, I did send a, a memo kind of summarizing, but just kind of a summary of the summary, so to speak. To my knowledge, there, you know, this looks like a fairly substantive amendment since it covers nearly forty pages out of the zoning ordinance, but the vast majority of those changes are very minor wording tweaks that do very minimal substantive change to the ordinance. There's really only, I would say, four key areas that are what I would consider substantive changes. That includes additional restrictions on freestanding commercial parking lots, the requirement that new single-family or two-family dwellings have a minimum garage. This would not require existing homes if they don't have a garage to add one. The requirement that any new single-family or two-family dwelling have a paved driveway in the front yard. Again, this would not require any existing dwelling that does not have a paved driveway to add one, and then...
Can I, can I stop you just a second? I'm sorry, you're on a roll, Eric, but why do we want those things? Why, why do we want paved driveways?
It's, there was quite a bit of discussion at that, at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, but it's primarily getting into the use of a neighborhood, the vitality of a neighborhood, and the aesthetics of a neighborhood. There, there are also some benefits to ensuring that you don't have a lot of runoff that can cause stormwater discharge issues. But kind of getting into the others are the primary ones that we're going to discuss. The garage is primarily, in today's day and age, based on just how much stuff generally people are going to have, ensuring that you've got somewhere to put bikes and lawn mowers and, so that they're not scattered all over, you know, the yard wherever you can stash them, basically. We've generally been seeing very few homes being built without at least some small level of garage. Habitat was at, you know, one point in time not building garages and just doing a fairly small shed. They've even switched and are supportive of this amendment as well. So, it's, it's a very small fourteen-by-twenty minimum standard. It's a, it's an oversized shed. Small, single-stall garage is all that requirement is, and again, only applies to new construction, not existing dwellings that would not have a garage.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but...
That's okay, and then just kind of...
I mean, we're putting it in there. Why are we putting it in there? Just because we want to or because there's a reason, so thank you.
Yep, and then the other thing, just to kind of address what it's not, you know, because this amendment was going through kind of the same time as some of those other amendments, this amendment has absolutely, you know, nothing to do or no impact with campers or, you know, recreational vehicles or where they can or cannot park with other parking requirements or property maintenance issues. None of that is part of this zoning ordinance amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions of their counsel? Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, there is a motion and a second. With, if counsel, do you have any further comments? All in favor? I'm sorry, that's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Yes, sir.
I had a question for Mr. Schroeder.
Well, ask it up here, please.
Dixon Stokely, four-twenty-one Belmont Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. Dixon, ask up here, please, and I'll, yeah, direct your questions up here, please. Thank you.
Do we, what happens on an oddly shaped lot where you tear down a house and doesn't have a room for a driveway in the front?
I don't think the driveway has to be in front. The driveway has to be to the garage. If there is a new residential structure built, it will have to have a garage and it will have to have a hard-surface driveway.
Well, I really came to say a few words if you don't mind.
You may. You have three minutes. Your view's thirty seconds.
Half gone already, huh? In the interest of economic development, visits to Waterloo should be as pleasant as possible, especially for those who may have reason to want to move here and contribute to our local economy. To appeal to the broadest spectrum of individuals, they should see the widest diversity of styles as possible while they're here. This ordinance would limit our options unnecessarily. The proper hard surfaces called for in this ordinance are defined in another ordinance as Portland concrete on gravel or hot asphalt on gravel or something approved by engineering, but must be similar to Portland concrete or hot asphalt. Similarities to these two materials are they're waterproof, they contain an aggregate, and they're bound by a cement, either Portland or hot asphalt. Cobblestones don't sound like that, and other attractive materials wouldn't work. One of the stated purposes of this ordinance is to improve aesthetics, but having all the driveways the same and the lot layouts the same is not the way. Some people like living in neighborhoods where everything has the same theme. Garage face forward, limited or no access to the back, concrete or asphalt everywhere, but not everyone likes that aesthetic. In the interest of economic development, we should craft our ordinance to encourage and facilitate as diverse a selection as possible of layouts, styles and materials. This ordinance should be amended to encourage permeable pavements, variety and access to the back, at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you, Dixon, and for your sake and for anybody else's sake that might be listening, there's an appeal process to any of these ordinances. So, if you want to build a new house in the City of Waterloo and you want to put down some kind of a nice base with the interlocking tile or something like that, you may go to Planning and Zoning or Board of Adjustment and apply for a variance to that zoning ordinance. I, I can't speak for them and won't, but I would, I would suggest to you that if you have a legitimate hard-surface option to either concrete or asphalt, it would take a serious look at that.
Eric Schrader, city planner, yeah, just a few rebuttal issues. So, first off, this ordinance requires that you have a minimum garage. It does not dictate attached or detached and does not dictate location. So, you can put a garage in your rear yard, rear yard, you can put a driveway to that rear yard if it's off of an alley or something like that. The heart for a new house construction, the only pavement requirement is if that driveway is in the front yard. It doesn't have to be in the front yard, and if you put it other than in your front yard, it does not have to be paved. So, if you build a garage, if you build a new house with a detached garage in the backyard with a gravel driveway off of an alley or off of a side street, those are all permitted. And then regarding the hard-surfacing type, the, the ordinance, we're not making any changes there. So, that part is what is already currently in the ordinance, and it does have wording about similar types as approved by the city engineer. And that wording has been used to allow such patio, or brick pavers and other types of unique... The, the main thing that the engineer is going to look at there is going to be durability and ensure that you've got something that's going to hold up. But he will approve, you know, different types, and if he doesn't, there would be that Board of Adjustment appeal process.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, counsel, do you have any questions or comments to that? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm going to vote no, and this is no disrespect to Mr. Schrader or Mr. Welper, but I just think that this process could have been handled in a different and better way involving a lot of contractors, realtors, that kind of thing, so I'm going to vote no on this.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number fifteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Lynn?
I move to reject the bid as received from Peters Construction of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars for the bid to perform door replacement work in the baggage makeup area and the baggage claim area of the airline passenger terminal building at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second. Very good, just so that we don't leave any doubt in anybody's mind that we're not casting any dispersions on Peters Construction Company. dispersions on Peters Construction Company, Keith, would you just explain why we're not accepting this bid?
Good evening, Keith Caspari, Airport Director. The reason that we rejected the bids is this is under the fiscal year fifteen program. When you combine the other two that were accepted tonight, we just did not have sufficient funds to complete all three projects. This project will come back as a fiscal year sixteen program with one other project identified in that application, so...
Thanks, Keith.
You bet.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those saying aye, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to mayor, counsel, and I'll decide to do so, please, please limit your time minutes to three minutes and tell us where you are.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. I think it was a couple of years ago, I think we passed what we call the nuisance ordinance. I think we bring these sheets down every week to the chief, and the same addresses are on there. So I went back to the nuisance ordinance, and the number five on there is disorderly conduct. Same addresses, probably the same people, week after week after week are on these sheets, and nothing seems like being done.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Randy Herod, one-eleven Highland Boulevard. Recently, the city council addressed a request from one of the city's police officers to move outside the... Set the distance from the city. An answer was found. However, I'll suggest that while this was solved for the officer, the actual challenge was neither identified nor addressed. That is, that any officer, or any city employee for that matter, would have to consider moving from the City of Waterloo to protect himself and his family. No officer should have to face that kind of decision. As important as that is, there is a larger level of importance. The Waterloo Police, as a force as well as an individual, police officers represent the safety of the people of Waterloo. A threat on any officer is fundamentally a threat against all citizens of Waterloo. As I understand it, this was not just a threat made in the heat of a moment, which we can all understand, rather it was a calculated, cold, almost cowardly threat made from behind closed doors. Obviously, such a threat cannot be tolerated in our community. Besides the obvious fact that our employees as well as our citizens must feel safe in their homes, this can have a poor impact on our community as a whole. For example, much has been made about finding new businesses to move here. I used to work at a company where we made decisions about where to put new businesses, and such goals for the city are well justified. But what business would want to move to our city when police officers must move to keep their families safe? Has progress been made in finding the source of these threats? I hope so. If more resources are required to find this criminal, I suggest that contact be made with the office of our Senator Grassley, who is an original co-sponsor of the Rafael Ramos and Wijin Lu National Blue Alert Act, which also creates a nationwide system known as Blue Alert. This should not be allowed to stand as is in our community. With the recent rise in criminal actions being taken against police across the country, here in Waterloo, we have the opportunity to become a beacon of light, supporting law and our police force. That's it.
Thanks, Randy. Thank you for your words.
You still have the buzzer, don't you, Madam Clerk?
We certainly do, yeah.
Ron Wood, Chair of the Waterloo Human Rights Commission. What we're here to... What I'm here tonight for is to represent the commission and kind of let everybody know where we're going and what we've been doing. First of all, if Director Funchess would come and pass these out, please. We had a meeting with a gentleman by the name of Jeffrey Schott, who represents the University of Iowa Public Affairs for a planning session. In that planning session, we had quite a few different members of the community who gave us a lot of good information. What Director Funchess is handing out to you is what Jeffrey Schott sent back to us. So at your leisure, you can review and see some of the things that we hope to attack over the next couple of years. Also, there is another form that was sent out. It's called ACES, and what this is, is childhood development and negative things that happen. And we put this together, actually Director Funchess put it together, so that you can see where some of these individuals could be going if we don't do things to further make things better for our youth. One of the things that we are attacking is they call the "ban the box," which means on application forms that you would... If you have the writing that says, "Are you a felon?", we propose that you take that off. What that does not do is give an employer... It does not take away the rights of employers to ask questions. They still can do this on... But a lot of times, people get an application, see that, and file thirteen, and that is against the law. Violence in Waterloo is no new news. We want to partner with council, police, and the community to stop this destructive violence. How do we achieve these and other goals and priorities? Through education of our commission, our city council, our police, and our community. I would present this example, and I went on web, and I took a whole lot of different things and kind of condensed it into kind of a median-type situation. Over forty percent of arrests have an individual with some form of mental illness, which can lead to drugs, other different types of things, and violence. How do police deal with individuals with mental issues? Very simple. They need to be educated in identifying, and instead of jail, perhaps, perhaps hospitalization would be the cure. This is just the tip of the iceberg in what education will achieve. To further education in our community, the human rights staff has developed outstanding coursework in... May I continue? In the human rights...
Try to finish up as soon as you can, Ron.
Yep, probably, real quick. In the Human Rights Training Academy. We urge the council, the community, to enroll in this course to further your knowledge of human rights. No date has been set, but is in the works. You can call three-one-nine-two-nine-one-four-four-one with more information. We would love to have a full house. And last but not least, we want to be a proactive commission instead of being reactive in nature. We feel our goal is to preserve and nurture basic human rights and education to achieve this goal. Unfortunately, it does take funding, and we would encourage the council to consider funding, training, our police, and personnel that can help make a difference for our youth and our city. Waterloo is a great place to live and raise our families for all of our citizens. I will give the council and community monthly updates after our meetings so that you can see where we're going and ask questions as needed.
Thank you, Ron, very much, appreciate it. And just for your information, Ron, and everybody's that watches and those that attend regularly, you know, we did bring back the timer, and what I would encourage you to do in the future, if you would like to come make a presentation, is call down the day of the meeting, talk to the clerk's office, and we will give you extra time. So, you know, that's kind of the way we've been handling that. I hate to cut people off, and we had a meeting several, several months ago, a couple of years ago even now, that council decided that they wanted me to try to enforce the timer. So I do try the best I can to keep it to three minutes, but if you have more to say, call in and request time, and we'll get it to you.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, several years ago, and Steve, you helped me with this, I thought we used to get like an update from the commission just on things going on, maybe a work session, fifteen, twenty minutes, just to update the council on things that are taking place within the commission. So maybe that would be a better platform to hear as well.
Work session type thing?
Yeah.
Maybe you...
Just an update.
Sure.
Get a little more give and take, yeah.
Yes, sir. John, excuse me, John Turbin, seventeen-fifteen Raven Road. Not going to beat a dead horse, but just like to throw another idea, because there's always a lot of different ways that we look at things. This driveway and the small garage, sounds like a tremendous idea, does make the community pretty. It costs about probably maybe ten thousand or give or take five or ten to build a garage, and it takes probably twenty thousand to build a halfway decent driveway. And add that to the thirty-year contract that you just got done signing to buy that house, and then you see why we... Us guys sit out there and try to figure out ways to make the community more affordable. I don't think anybody that's in the high-roller neighborhoods are going to worry about a driveway and a garage, because they're going to have them anyway. But when we try to do some of the neighborhoods that could, you know, just get by with a cheaper house and stuff, and then we require that much, then what happens is because the money is not there. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a quick question? Where I'm thinking of...
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Lynn.
Are we pursuing the threats against our police officers?
That's a police matter. I have no idea, Mr. Lynn.
Can we get an update on that? You don't have to do it now.
Probably not publicly, but privately, yes, I'm sure we can.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Forrest.
Good evening. I am Forrest Dilavu, seventeen-twenty-five Huntington Road, in case you don't know who I am. I was here several weeks ago, and I requested that you folks try and find five thousand dollars to keep the Young Arena open from six to eight, scheduled to close in two weeks. And I'd asked for a report when that happened. Well, it hasn't happened. This week, I made some phone calls. I called the mayor's office, and I called the leisure service, or went down to the leisure service office, and I called one of the council people. The answers I got were not that it was solved. The first one I got was that this was a result of budget, and the budget was giving credit to one of the council people, and said that the only way we would change this was through budget changes. And leisure services said something similar. You folks can repeat what you said, so in case I missed something or said something incorrectly. And the council person said confused, I guess would be the best word for me for what they said. But those walkers down there, one of them was sporting his brand-new walker here this last week, and he said, "Have you got any money for us yet?" He's a regular, been there for years, six to eight. He says they've got money for everything else, everything else. You proved that tonight. If you're requesting money for the sixty-three-quarter walkway, six hundred thousand dollars for the city's share, and you can't find five thousand dollars for those folks who have used it for years from six to eight, there's something wrong with the city that can't find a few thousand dollars, but they've got six hundred thousand for an outside trail that can't even be used all year. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Paul, did you distribute your fact sheet to counsel?
No, but I can.
Would you please, just so... And maybe you can go over it and answer Mr. Dilavu's comments.
I got one there, thanks. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Mr. Dilavu and I have met on a couple of different occasions, and I have taken seriously his challenge to try to find the money somewhere else. I have not specifically found the money. We have met with the Young Arena Committee. We feel we have some ideas, I would call them mitigation ideas. Primarily, we're hoping and planning to rent more ice time, and we feel we'll be successful in this. If that ice time is rented, that eliminates the need or takes care of the employees' pay for that time. So we anticipate that we will not be closed from six to eight every day or even close to it. We anticipate that when the ice is active, which would probably be September or October through May, that we'll be open most of those days at that early time, because actually the bill's being paid by those who are renting the ice for private lessons and that type of thing in the morning. The other thing we looked at is what else is available in the community. And we did find that Ridgeway Place at Kimball Ridge is open from five AM to nine PM. There's a dedicated Blue Zones walking area that's marked throughout the building, gets air-conditioned and heated. Really, a very nice place to walk, and they welcome people. One of our staff members was there and said there are a number of people walking, and they said they would welcome more. Crossroads Shopping Center is open for walkers at six-thirty AM, so there are some other choices out there. We also have outdoor walking. We checked with East High and West High, and their tracks are both available for public walking. Granted, that's outdoors, and it can be raining in inclement weather. That doesn't work too well. We also have the Downtown River Walk Loop, which we have good access at the amphitheater, which is real close to the arena if people are wanting to walk in that neighborhood. We have the Lafayette Park Trail Loop that we put in several years ago that's very well-used. So during those summer months, that's a great place to walk. And then we put new trails at Riverview Recreation Area, and we're installing, excuse me, a new trail around Harold Getty Lake. And we have a hundred and ten miles of hard surface trail. So, you know, in summary, we think there are other options. We are going to try to keep the arena as open as many hours as we can, and we also have numbers in there for you all to look at. We've been keeping track of the numbers that are there between six and eight, so you can look at those.
Thanks, Paul. Does anybody have any questions? I mean, there's... Forrest's got a... He's impatient and has a plea, and I, you know, have empathy. But it is a result of budget reductions. When we give up money, we give up people and programs.
The only other thing I would add is it's not necessarily Mr. Hart's budget, in my opinion, because I was asked to find some money, and I take responsibility for that. We did identify this as a possible cut, so...
And it was identified when we adopted the budget? Counsel was well aware that this funding was going to go away? Okay. Yes, sir.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I have to agree with Forrest. You know, we have... We could spend six hundred thousand dollars on trails, and we can't seem to fix the roads in town. Something seems to be amiss there. Another thing here is VGM is not adding people to Waterloo, which I thought was part of the TIF thing, to get people in business, to bring people to town, to spend money, to get a tax base that helps us relieve our tax base now. But yet, I read in the paper that they're going to move people from a site already in the crossroads, which is already in Waterloo, that's paying taxes, to go to a site that we gave them seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay someone that owns that property that's part of VGM, from my understanding. So we gave them money to have them buy something from themselves. That doesn't make any sense. On item thirteen and A two, A three, we are abandoning, or we are abandoning, I guess, utility easements. My question there is that what happens when those... If there is a utility running through the area, we abandon it, we have no right to go in or without paying those people to tear up that property to fix that utility? Is that true? And then the TIF transfer? Has anything been resolved or understood about, are we transferring money from one account to another to make another district look better? And then that district that was transferred from looks bad, so we never get to transfer money back or from a different budget? Whatever. Thank you.
Thanks, David. You had several questions in there that, you know, we would like to answer for you. I don't think any of us sitting here, I can't answer them. If you'll come in during the day, come to my office, go to the Chief Financial Officer's office, Chief, go to the Planning Department, we'll try to get all of those questions answered for you.
Okay, I can do that.
Steve Murphy, one-twenty-four Terrace Drive. I guess, trying to help out my good friend, Mr. Forrest Dilavu. How about this? Let's be the city that cares enough about walking that we'll move our mowers a little farther away. Let's get the mowers out of the garage that we rent from JSA, move it to where we used to keep the dogs. That's got to be empty. And then let's quit paying rent on that. That's more than enough for... That's twelve thousand dollars a year to store mowers. We need five thousand for the walking. Seems like we can... Seems like we can make the math work out. We need to buy a new trailer to haul the mowers. We got a little money in the budget for that. Specifically, I'm asking for the dollars and cents of why we're paying to store, to store mowers and snow blowers and small equipment when we have buildings that we flat-out own and would not have to pay to store. So I'll, you know, a couple of weeks, we could work that out. I'd be, you have my email address, and I'd be happy to, I want to see the numbers about why it makes sense to rent storage for mowers and throw walkers, in a blue city, throw walkers out of a free walking arena. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morsy?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make mention of the fact that it was, it's very encouraging to see in conversations with Noel that the Wonder Bread project development is moving forward, and I look forward to seeing in a couple of weeks a resolution to bring it up to city council.
Mr. Hart?
Motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, adjourn.